Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, and welcome to the Select Board meeting. It is Monday, November 25th. If you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And we have public comment first. I have two requests. I have Adam Hayward, and I saw you come in, so you can be first there. Thank you.
Last one here, first one up. Love it.
It's just the order they came in, that's all.
So, I just wanted to, A, thank you guys for the nominations to the CPC. Adding those extra seats was wonderful. However, I kind of have an issue with the process of the nominations. I didn't see any formal announcement of who to send interest to or anything like that. It was kind of talked about here, and that was kind of it. So, I know there was a couple of people that were interested that didn't get a shake, so I would ask you guys to maybe look at that policy and see if you can't adjust that so everyone's getting a fair shake at getting a chance to get in there. I had reached out to Ed as our selectman representative on the board because I found out that one of the applicants was listed as being on the Groveland Housing Authority, and turns out she was not. Is that a big deal? I don't think so, but I think it was at least worth a conversation. And that's, you know, what I was trying to do last week, but unfortunately, I couldn't make it here. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Hi. Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptack Road. So, I just want to spread the word to the community about Groveland Community News in our monthly news show, What's Up Groveland? It's a monthly TV show that features local news, ideas, community events, interviews, and items from town boards and committees such as this one. The next show will be broadcast on this coming Monday, week from today, on December 2nd at 7:00 PM on cable channel 22. It's also available to watch on Groveland TV YouTube channel, which you can get to from the town website, and also at the grovelandnews.net website. So, previous shows are also available on the YouTube channel. Suggestions for topics can be made by emailing whatsupgroveland@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we don't have any department or comment or update listed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, moving right on to discussion and possible vote. We have seven items under this. First up is the Cemetery Commission. Second is the Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Statement of Goals. Three is Economic Development Committee Reduction of Membership Request. Four is the Penticat Regional School District Regional Agreement Amendments. Five is a Review of Trash and Recycling Committees Recommendation on Cart Sizes. Six is the Current Trash and Recycling Contract Consideration of Amendment for Automated Pickup. And seven is the Pines Recreation Area Dog Park Signage and Bark Pass Requirements. After that, we will go to Appointments and Resignations, Approval of Minutes, Old Unfinished Business, Other Items Not Reasonably Anticipated, Town Administrator Time, Select Board Member Time, and Correspondence, and then conclude our meeting. So, at this time, the Cemetery Commission is the first item on the agenda, and my husband, Michael Kestrelles, is a member of the commission, so I will recuse myself and ask Jason to chair this section of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to step up and go over the new fees? What's changed?
My name is Rockdour, 107 School Street, and I am the chairman of the Cemetery Commission. We just have a few changes here. We've gone up from 800 to 1,000 for the single graves, and 1,800 for two graves, 3,500 for four graves. And the only other things we have are like changing burials arriving after 1 o'clock, an additional $100 an hour, headstone foundation settings per lot, there's $150 per square foot to set up a, put the stone on. Just a few things that coincide with what other cemeteries are getting. We don't make a profit. We'd be lucky if we break even type thing, and that's what we're just trying to do, to stay within the parameters of what other places are doing. Believe me, we're not the most expensive. We're some ways in the middle, I think, probably closer to the lower end of what people charge because it is a municipal cemetery, and we do get taxpayers money for, to make it run. So, basically, here, if you people have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Rock?
No.
No? No? Does everybody seem to think that the fee increases that he's mentioned is appropriate and reasonable?
It's more than fair.
So, I'll entertain a motion to accept these fees?
Make a motion. We accept the new fees for the Riverview Cemetery.
I'll second that.
Motion, and seconded. Any further discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Four in favor, one recused. And now, I'll go get Kathy and turn the meeting back over to her.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll get the word out, maybe with Mike or something, because we'll get, maybe you could put it out over your thing, the different ad issues we put on. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Okay. So, now they go home. Good night. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Drive within the speed limit.
Watch out for those turkeys.
Watch out for those turkeys.
And the deer.
As always. Okay. Next up is our Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Statement of Goals.
Yes. I had asked for this item to be on the agenda more so as a formality, just so that we can review the goals that we are putting for, through our departments, to utilize while making their budgetary recommendations. We did review these last year. The board voted not to change the goals as they were written. I also provided the goals as presented this evening to the Finance Board, and there were no additional changes, recommendations, or edits. So, I would just like the board to take a second and review the budget goals and to confirm that is in fact still the intent of the board, and those goals will be included in the guidelines that will be sent to the departments for their budget requests.
Okay. So, I'll just kind of paraphrase. The first goal is a financial goal, refers to steadily improving financial condition through balancing budgets and advancing responsible reserve policies that strengthen town government flexibility to act on pressing needs while protecting against economic downturns that could threaten municipal service delivery and the viability of town government. We all set on that? Okay. Next is Economic Development. Further supporting through an aggressive agenda that seeks to attract new revenues in a variety of forms, including property tax, auto excise tax, and building and licensing fee while simultaneously increasing employment opportunities for local residents, emphasizing the preservation and improvement of historic property into higher and better uses that broaden the sectors of the economy, doing business in the town, and lead to an overall improvement of the image of the town, both internally and externally. That's the economic development goal. Neighborhood enhancement, continually producing improvements in each and every neighborhood of the town by updating infrastructure through a functioning capital improvement program, road maintenance program, rehabilitating the housing stock, enhancing open space, and resolving longstanding problems, including residential and industrial complex. Still good? Okay. Community development, fully encourage partnerships between town government and its stakeholders in Groveland's success, including other governmental entities, the business community, nonprofit leaders, neighborhood groups, and individual residents, in order to support a broader way of programs and initiatives that may or may not be town-run but are all supportive of the town's desire to promote the advancement of its families and individual residents over a broad range of human needs. So, that's community and development. Public safety, constantly improving upon the protection of the public and its property by initiating policy and providing the necessary resources, be it training, manning, wait, a minute, training, manning, or equipment? Okay. Manning or equipment? That's supposed to, do I understand that? No, don't. Jason's laughing at me. Or to effectively carry out the missions of the town's law enforcement, fire, and emergency management agencies. And then, there's a word "and." Is there, did I read it wrong? That last sentence, it says, be it training or manning, meaning people.
Manning or equipment.
Okay, okay. But then, it ends with emergency management agencies, comma, and. Am I missing a word?
No, "and" being the last bullet.
Oh, okay, okay. So, then governmental philosophy. Thank you for the clarification. Becoming a more open and responsive and responsible municipal government through various public and media outlets that not only hears the needs of its people but develops and initiates efforts designed to address those needs in an honest, fair, equitable, accountable, and cost-efficient manner. And that's the last one. Are we all good with those? Will we make a motion, please, to approve these again? Would you like, yeah, make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the current budget goals going into this budget season.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? There be none? All in favor? It's unanimous? Okay, we're going to move on. Next on the agenda will be, the Economic Development Committee is asking to reduce its membership from nine members to five members.
Yes. So, this was an item that I had requested be placed on the agenda after having communications with the committee. They have been struggling for a couple of months now to hold a public meeting. They have had quorum issues.
Okay.
The issue with the Economic Development Committee is it's made up of a variety of individuals, so we had structured it, as you'll see in your packet, to have, you know, one resident at large, then we have one planning board member, one zoning board member, and then we have a couple of business members that would be present. Businesses ranging from restaurants to landscaping, to insurance companies, et cetera. And so, the issue we're running into as well is that, you know, there's varying times of operation, so we're not really able to find a time to meet and meet those quorums. And then, also in talking, one of the zoning board members is also on the planning board, so they're getting redundant information through their liaison on the planning board. So, in efforts to allow for them to operate more effectively and to be able to hold a meeting so that they can continue on with their mission, it is being recommended that we reduce the membership from the nine members to five members, and that we would remove the zoning board member because essentially, the planning board is the one that would ultimately hear any zoning changes, and they do a lot with our land use. Zoning is more for variances. So, this would in fact coincide still with the mission that was originally put forward, and that we also reduce by one business member. So, we wouldn't impact any of the current membership, and that we would still be able to meet and to, again, carry forward with the mission of the committee.
So, how many members would be business owners?
So, I believe it would be, now that I don't have the packet up in front.
Well, it was six. It was six, one, one, and we took off zoning.
So, it'd be one member from the planning board, one resident at large, and then it would be four business owners instead of the six.
So, that's six members.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three?
Yes.
One, three.
Three business members, which we currently have now.
Okay. And then, it's open to anybody else that wants to come too, right?
Of course. And that'll allow them to have open meetings so that we can participate with the public on some of the topics that are before them currently that are stalled because they, again, have not been able to meet. Their most recent meeting was scheduled to be on the 14th, and they did not make quorum.
Okay. So, the request is coming from this committee, and they currently have this membership?
They do. So, we currently have Bill Dunn with Dunn Landscaping, Steve Collins with Collins Family Tree, Brian Canal with Norwood Insurance, Angus Jennings, who is the resident, and then DJ McNulty is the planning board representative, and Chris Goodwin has been trying to show, but again, he said that he has plenty of committees to keep him busy, and he'll be staying informed through the planning board, so.
Okay. So, I would need a motion to reduce the, let's see, the right name of it, economic, it's just called Economic Development now, Economic Development Committee, from nine members to five members, and the membership would be as follows. Three members of the committee will be business owners in town. One member of the committee shall be a representative of the planning board, and one member of the committee shall be a resident.
So motioned.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion of this? No. I support, it's really hard to get nine people together nowadays. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. Okay, and we'll move on. Next on our agenda is the Penticat Regional School District Agreement Amendments. So, tomorrow night, we are going to the, I call it the State of the Schools Address. I don't know what they call it now, but it's an overview of how the school is doing, looking at its budget. And then, at 7:00 PM at the high school, middle school building, we will conduct a meeting of the, it's not advisory, of whatever the informal group is, all of us that want to go, right?
So, it will be all of the select boards.
All the select boards.
Each individual community has posted a meeting for that.
Okay. So, every select board member who's present would go to this meeting at 7:00, and the goal would be to come to a consensus on these changes. So, on page one of the agreement, the only change that I noted was the change, of course, from the Board of Selectmen to Select Boards, which is the name across all three towns. And then, on page two, this is where we're given two choices. There's Item B first, and then Item B second. Myself, I prefer Item B, the first one, because I think it's more straightforward and transparent. It just says, there shall be not less than one elementary school in each member town. Students in grades pre-K through five or six shall attend schools in their towns of residence except in case of emergency, blah, blah, and the emergency stuff. The second one would say, the alternative, there may be one or more elementary schools in each member town, provided however that the towns may decide to share or consolidate elementary schools in the future. Unless and until any such consolidation, students in grades pre-K through five or six shall attend schools in their towns of residence except in cases of emergencies. And then, it goes on to talk about emergencies and special education. So, we have a choice here on those two phrases. Myself personally, I lean to the first one because during all the years that the regional agreement was under consideration to change to pre-K to 12, we never changed the language in advance that said, we may go to pre-K through 12. We just worked on it until we had agreement. So, I feel like the first reading is very straightforward and to the point, and the second one is a little bit confusing about why it's there because we're not consolidating our elementary schools at this time.
Yeah, I think the intent was to open it up so they could potentially combine the elementary schools in the future if towns needed to, wherein the first one is much more strict. There will be one in every town.
Yes.
So, it doesn't leave it open to anything until we, unless we were to redo the agreement, which is something they wanted to avoid in the future if they chose to change.
Well, we do re-up the agreement every three years. So, once every three years, we can review it again, but my concern is that if any change that is proposed doesn't pass in all three towns, the agreement fails. So, we have to have consensus and support, and I feel that we shouldn't change the wording until the day comes that we're actually deciding to change the elementary configuration. So that it's crystal clear who, where the students are going to school. The elementary students are going to school in their hometown. Middle and high school go to the regional school. That's very straightforward, except for emergencies, and of course, magnet programs and things like that. So, do we have any, we have to kind of decide whether we're going, we originally stayed with there shall not be less than one elementary. And I think it's just one of the three towns that still wants to go. There may, there may be one or more elementary. And the word "may" is not the same as "shall." It leaves it open to interpretation and, yeah.
I guess I'd be curious to know, I mean, I know Jason explained a little bit about, like, what would be the rationale between, like, consolidating?
Well, I think the rationale isn't, doesn't, does not have ill intention, but when I think back to when we fully regionalized, one of the most important aspects of the full regionalization was that the elementary schools would stay within each town. Yeah. That was important to all the residents that voted to go through full regionalization. So, I would just not put it in there because if you put it in there and it goes to the town meeting and it gets confusing, and they vote it down, then the regional agreement does not pass. So, if we know that there's anything that might be confusing and might make people think they're, we're moving elementary children to another town, I wouldn't put it on the town meeting floor like that.
No, that makes sense.
Town meetings are confusing enough, honestly.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of the verbiage on things.
Right. So, we have three towns that are going to try, and usually, we just re-up this agreement every three years, and there have been very small changes. This is the first time we've had a little more substantial changes. But what, we need consensus to go to the meeting tomorrow night, which, are we sticking with the top one, which is what we have now, or do you want to entertain the second B? Yes, Ed?
Number nine.
We're on the page.
Admission of additional.
Right. Well, we first have to decide on this red circle thing on page, is it page two, I think?
Page two, yeah.
Yeah. Under four location of schools. We just need to have a vote of this board because in case we're not all there tomorrow night, we need to have a vote of this board on that. Are we going to stay with what's in the agreement? There shall not be less than one elementary in each member town? Or are we going to move to there may be one or more elementary school in each member town, provided however that the towns may decide to share or consolidate elementary schools in the future, unless and until such consolidation, students in grades pre-K through five or six shall attend schools in their towns of residence? That's the new sentence.
So, I'll make a motion that we stick with the first one, simply because I don't see a need to make it easier to make that change in the future because it's something that's going to be, need to be discussed by all the boards and the towns are going to have to agree upon it. So, it's a moot point, and like you said, it's going to be much easier at a town meeting to stick with what's already there, until the point where some towns feel it necessary to combine the elementary schools.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
We're ready to vote? All in favor of this? Thank you. It's unanimous. So, we go forward, and, okay. I'm just scrolling down until I find the next. Okay, some of the crossouts don't matter because we added, like, where they crossed out, that we can ask for a meeting on page eight. It's crossed out, but I think further on, it says we can ask for the meeting in another paragraph. Am I correct on that? Okay, so we're not losing the ability to ask for that meeting. That's page eight. And on page nine, it just crossed off, how many people have to be at that meeting? If I feel that's okay. And it's, they just changed Select Boards, Board of Selectmen, all the way through on page 10. And so, Ed, you had a question on section nine?
Section nine, Roman numeral nine.
Yes, okay.
Admission of additional towns, which the wording is, the wording is good, but maybe if another town joins the district, they should also have representation on the school committee. And I don't know whether you would put it in that paragraph. Right now, the three towns have three members each, so if we take in another town, they should also have representation on the board of, on the school committee.
It's under, it's going to be at the front, I'll bet. Oh, wait, here it is. Membership. Okay, so that's section one is membership. That's pretty specific right now.
Well, maybe you could point out where, if we bring in another town.
We'd have to revise that.
Where would they be, where does it say in the membership that they would be granted a school committee members? Because it says, the Penticat Regional School Committee shall consist of nine members.
Yep.
Three from each town.
Yep, it does say that. It does say what happens if one of us pulls out, but you're right, it doesn't say what happens if another town joins. Rebecca, do you think it's, that this should be brought forward or not? It's a good point.
It's ultimately up to the board. I know that the changes that we had made have all been sent over to the surrounding communities and have been vetted through the process.
Yeah.
If the board would like to make additional changes, then it's in your purview to do so, but these are not changes that have been included in the draft that's going to be reviewed by the tri-towns tomorrow. So, it's something you could address, it's something you could say that you would like to look into, further amendment? It's up to the board, but whatever it be, just know that it's not something that had been proposed before.
Okay. So, why don't we, if we want to make a motion, Ed, you can make a motion for a future consideration to, because we don't, this language, as she said, we're now all looking at the same document at the same time across three towns, and the meeting's tomorrow.
You could make the amendment if you wanted to and make it at the meeting, but just note that you're going to need to make the amendment on the floor.
Yeah.
During the conversation. They're just not aware of this being proposed, so you're going to have to guide the conversation is essentially what I'm.
Well, I think we'd have to look into other regional agreements to see how that's handled. They talk about the withdrawal, but they don't talk about, so I would imagine if another town joins, you completely redo the regional agreement. We could put that in, that upon the admission of another town, the regional agreement must be updated, or something like that, to allow for the representation. That could go down under section nine without impacting the first section. I'm not an attorney either, so I'm not quite sure whether that's what they would say to do or not to do. A new member may be admitted to the regional, invited to the rest of, da, 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 da. I mean, that's where you would put the amendment, right in there somewhere.
Well, I would expect, once they are a member, then section one would automatically apply to them, just as does all the other members.
I would assume, but it doesn't say that. It deals with the withdrawal, section one deals with the withdrawal of a town, but not the acceptance of a town. but not the acceptance of a town. Oh, wait a minute. It does refer to section 14, I don't know if that's anything. That's just the occurrence of that. I. Ed, do you have a proposed amendment to put into that section nine or not?
Uh, no, not offhand.
Right, so that, that's our problem. So we don't have the proper wording. Should we just raise that as a concern? Is everybody okay with that being raised as a concern? That that topic is not specifically covered? Because it isn't, unless it's buried in some of the legal jargon that we're not aware of. Okay, so. Go back to section nine, so we'll make a point that, we'll raise that. I'll just put a point of representation. No. There's no changes to the representation mentioned, okay, so we'll bring that up. Okay, is there anything else? Otherwise, this, believe it or not, is ready to go. Believe it or not, I know it's been, taken a while, a few years here, I think, actually. And I wanted to thank our town administrator for hanging in there with us because it's taken a while. And we appreciate the meetings that you've been doing for us in between our meetings. And they've obviously been productive because this is now not in three different colors and we can read through it and it makes sense. It's exactly the way we need to see it. So I appreciate, we appreciate that, that work being done behind the scenes for us. Can I get a motion to accept this agreement with the vote that was taken on the item B and with the changes that are, the crossouts and highlights as is?
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement with the changes along with the vote on the first section B.
Okay, any more discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? And it's unanimous. Okay, so tomorrow night, the meeting for the school presentation is at six, I believe. And then at 7:00 PM would be the regional agreement. Hopefully that will, that will go right through. And now we're on to trash and recycling committee recommendations on cart sizes. We have Brian with us, we have our project and program manager, Arthur, right? I keep wanting to call you, you don't wanna, Andrew or Anthony, and I just know it's Arthur. Let me get this right. Appreciate that. He has a presentation on these carts, he's done some research and.
Okay, yeah, so, again, my name is Arthur Marcos, I'm a projects and programs manager here for the town. Past couple of months, I've been working together with the trash and recycling committee, also town administrator, past DEP. So you guys are familiar with this, well, obviously Kathy's on the commission and we have other people in here who are familiar with this. But I want to kind of explain it, kind of layman's terms a little bit and kind of be, give you an objective view of how, how this works. So basically what, what we're doing now is our current trash is, is manual pickup. So a person is, is on a trash truck, he comes out, picks up your trash. We're gonna go to automated, that's the wave of the future, everyone's doing it. Not that we're doing it because they are, but that's what all these, the new contracts are gonna be. So as you, actually coincidentally, that's what it looks like. You know, the automated means that they come out with that robot kind of hand and lifts the trash. To do that, you can't use your own trash receptacle, the carts. You have to have ones that are bought from the actual trash hauling company or you buy them on your own. And these are what we are gonna go over today in the options. So we, what we do have here is actually three examples that were given to us by our, our waste man, no, not waste management, Cascade, which is gonna be the company that we, we are, to procure our carts with, are from. So basically, how they are, a little bit of range different here. So what I want to kind of just show you is, you know, what we're doing for cost per cart, just to show that, how much each of them costs, it kind of puts things in perspective. And as you can see, you know, a 35 gallon, which is the middle one here, is, is forty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. A 64 gallon is forty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. And a 96 gallon is fifty-four cents, fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. So it's nice to see that there's not really a big difference in the actual cost per cart. So, and, and obviously, that's not the only cost. They, they do charge us for delivery and an assembly cost, so that's on top of that. So just kind of keep, keep things in perspective, and this is pretty much industry standard type of cost for these. Next, the next slide, please. So as we're picking our carts and as the town does, as I'm finding out a lot, working here, we wait to get a lot of grants and see what's out there, what's available. And one of the grants that is available is a Mass DEP called pays-as-you-throw grant. So the word pays-as-you-throw is, is kind of this new term that people are using to, to, to show that each household will be responsible to be paid for as much as it throws out, other than just a flat kind of fee that everybody pays within their taxes and trash is picked up. So Mass DEP defines the pays-as-you-throw program, actually, Brian is here, he's from the Mass DEP. So I'm kind of taking a little bit, a lot of information that we learned from him and kind of putting it into, in terms of what the town is probably more concerned about. So the pays-as-you-throw program is defined that each resident or household will individually buy special trash bags for curbside trash pickup. So they will pay, in particular, for each bag they throw out. This is only for solid waste, not for recycling. So the residents pay per unit for the amount of solid waste they generate, and this creates a financial incentive to recycle more and generate less waste. So that's the, the theory behind it. So there's two types of programs. There's a full program and, and we can kind of go, you know, we've gone through this thing where which towns do it and whatnot, but a full program is a household, all their trash bags, everything they dump out is a pays-as-you-throw bag. And then you have, and then we'll talk about the bags that you have to actually buy at a, at a, at a local retailer for, for a certain amount of money. The second is a modified program where it would just be, we would give them a certain volume and then anything over that would be an overflow bag, and actually kind of what we have now. And that household, those were prepaid and those would be only overflow, that's a modified program. So how does, how do we, how would we qualify for that grant? The way that we qualify is if a municipality elects to have one 35 gallon cart, which is this, the middle one here, for each household, and that will be all they can use. And anything more than that would be, would be called a modified or it'd be full, we're actually would use a 35 and only be able to put in prepaid bags in there. And if we did that, and I, we'll go through the options, Mass DEP will pay us thirty dollars each per cart. Does that sound right? So FYI, the town of Groveland has approximately 2,221 households. So if you multiply that out, we will get a grant of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. So it's a substantial amount of money, obviously. Rebecca will probably tell you more about budgets and how that works out, but that's, that's how much we get to account. So we go to the next one, next slide. So this is the matrix I made. So it's actually a little bit modified, so I came up with all the options. I know it's a lot of information, but I'll, I'll walk you through them, all the options. And we spoke with the, the, the trash and recycling committee about them. So just put things in perspective, what do we do currently? So our current contract, which is actually, we might, which I think is the next item with it, we're gonna be opening it up for negotiation, which if we do go to automated, we have to have carts. So our current contract is, is manual, but we have two 32 gallon or equivalent. So that's for every, everyone's house. Then we, then we give everyone an 18 gallon cart receptacle, but it's really unlimited volume of, of recycling, so. And from what I hear, you know, a lot of people do put more than two 32s and, and put out as much as they possibly can, because it's, no one's really policing that. But there's also what we have optional overflow bags, which is kind of like the pays-as-you-throw, but it's not regulated as such. But that is an option, I think, that was voted on or is, but it was, I don't know how often it's used. From what I'm hearing, it's not, not used as much as, as we'd like to, but we do have that in place. So obviously, there's no, there's no, there was no charge for those, for carts during that contract. So our first, the first option that I, that we came up, so we had a first meeting, we came up with a bunch of options. I kind of put them on paper, in, in, in kind of order, and then I'll show you the one that actually they, they chose. So the first one would be a 35 gallon trash, so the 35 gallon's the middle one. And then a 64 gallon for the recycling, so it'd be this one. And then, anything that's more than a 35 gallon, you can't just put a trash bag out there, you have to actually use a pays-as-you-throw bag, an overflow bag, to use that. And then, if you thought that you weren't getting a lot of volume, but you would, you can ask, you'd come to the town and you would actually be able to buy an optional additional 35 gallon cart. But you can't just put any trash in there, it has to be pays-as-you-throw bags to qualify for the grant. So the one, so that column right there shows which ones qualify for the grant, and then that would be the price. So it's basically, you know, a hundred sixty-one thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-one cents for that. The second option, which is not qualified for the grant, would be just two 64 gallon receptacles, one for trash, one for recycling. And that would be this one here, actually, a very common option, a lot of towns do have that, neighboring towns as well. The third option would be a 64 gallon trash and then a 96 gallon recycling. So, but when you use a 96 gallon, that triggers that, that, that your hauler will only come for a bi-weekly recycling pickup. So that's why that option comes up there. And again, that's a two hundred fifty-one thousand, because that's a little bit more, obviously, it's minus the grant. And then the fourth option, which I'll kind of go in more detail in the next slide, so, and this is the one that was chosen by the trash and recycling committee, is a 35 gallon trash, a 96 gallon recycling, and then the pays-as-you-go overflow bags with the optional 35 gallon cart that you can use with only pays-as-you-throw bags. And that, obviously, it triggers the grant, and that, and that will be our full price, a hundred seventy-four dollars, a hundred seventy-two thousand dollars and seventy, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. So, you go to the next slide? So I'm gonna break down the option, just kind of give you a comparison of what we have and what could have been. So basically, what would happen is, day one, we, everybody would get delivered a 35 gallon to their house, which would be this one, and also be the trash, and this one, which is actually, is full of recycling. I think we've been using it, it's actually, it's just kind of a demonstration one.
Okay.
But these two would be delivered to your house. So that's how we'd roll out, roll it out. So I'll just give you comparisons, trying to be objective on what we have here. So the 35 gallon cart is the first thing on topic. So that's approximately half of the allowable volume under the current contract, which allows the two 32 gallon carts. To put in that, you don't need any special bags, all household waste is allowed in that. After that 35 gallon is filled, residents will only be allowed to use the prepaid pays-as-you-go overflow bags, whether they put them in a second cart that they buy from the town or just put them separate. And I'll show you actually the, the, the things that we need to keep in mind when you do that, too. This 96 gallon cart for recycling, the town will have to actually do, do a little bit of renegotiation within their, if we do open up a contract, because we'd have to actually see if they would pick that up on a weekly basis or we'd have to go to, directly into bi-weekly. That's a question that I would have to them. And then the other thing is that our current contract actually allows for unlimited recycling. So in essence, you are limiting recycling down a little bit. You know, depends, I don't know how, how much people are actually putting out. But 96 is, is a big volume. So what it tells you on this side, and you can see the cost, so the cost per carts, and that kind of breaks it down. So the cost without a grant was two hundred forty-one thousand, thirty, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. And minus that, that's where you get the price from. The second portion, which is the pays-as-you-throw overflow bags and the additional cart, are gonna be additional costs to residents. So per, per the DEP grant, only overflow bags will be allowed to be put out in the street. They were gonna be, you know, specially colored, and you have to buy, like currently now, you have to go to the retailers and they're both, we don't know the exact price, but they have to be at least four dollars, just so we can actually almost break even. And I think that's, that's what they are now, does anybody know?
No, they're like, five bags for twelve fifty.
Okay, yeah, so the, the, we, I think the price we discussed is about four dollars and it's gonna be that, kind of the price that you want, you want to be around. And the town will be charged, though, a hundred doll, I mean, a dollar fifty every time they have to pick up an extra bag by the hauler, because they have to, they won't be able to be automated, they'll have to go out there and grab it with, manually. So that's that, and then the residents, if they want that additional 35 gallon cart, they will be charged one hundred seventy-five dollars for that cart, for the additional, and that, and that includes the weekly pickup. One question I kind of just was thinking about earlier, and I probably should have looked into it more, I don't know if that's gonna be an annual fee or a one-time fee? It's gonna be an annual fee. And some towns do, I know in some neighboring towns, actually, annual fees. So that'll be a, a hundred seventy-five dollar annual fee each resident would have to have, would have to pay. And only, like I said, we only, in that additional chart, additional cart, only pays-as-you-throw bags are allowed. And not only that, because that hundred seventy-five dollars is there, it's not because we're making a number up, it's because the town will be charged ten dollars per month for each home that has two carts. Because it needs to, you know, that's an extra type of thing, an extra time wasted to pick it up. So that's the pros and, kind of the pros and cons of, of option four, and that's what they, that's what they chose. I just wanted to put, kind of put out there, you know, a lot of, a lot of objective information that you guys can, and see and weigh in. I don't know the next one? Yeah, so here's another couple of, of things I do is if we opt into the pays-as-you-throw program, and this is some other things that just keep in consideration. If we do accept the grant money, we have to adopt the municipal bylaw by the Board of Health, regulating that it requires private haulers that provide integrated and recycling service and residential customers for one bundle price. This price is required, is to be level playing field and minimize the number of households opting into the municipal pays-as-you program. So we have to have a, write a, write a bylaw stating that we can't have private haulers working in town. So that, that kind of, because then it, it doesn't allow residents to screw the system and try to throw as much as they want out without use, without having to be within the town system. The municipal has to operate pays-as-you-throw program for within two years. In five years, if it has a cart, for the cart programs, would be probably five years for us. And it could be longer, and then pay only, again, then pays-as-you-throw bags are the only, the ones that you buy will be allowed in the additional 35 gallon cart. So that's kind of it, and then, I don't know if I have any more, that's, is that it? Yeah, that's gonna be it. So that was just kind of, I'll give you guys objective information. One thing, even just to be objective, is, is just kind of not of a, of a warning, but just to think that this kind of affects every resident in town. It's like plowing or road pave, or roadwork. So I think it's a decision that should be thought out and planned, because it will affect everybody. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We also asked to have Brian Walsh here, who's been our technical assistant from the environmental protection, right? So we looked at the impact of towns that transitioned to the 35 gallon cart. And Brian was able to provide us some fairly good statistics. I don't know if they, we have them at hand tonight, do we?
Typically, the average, like.
You have to use a microphone, Brian, I'm sorry. Because our people on cable TV at home, all dying to watch us, can't hear you.
Everyone, yeah, so typically, the average comes out to around, pay, towns that have pays-as-you-throw programs have, on average, thirty percent less tonnage volumes than non-pays-as-you-throw average. So that's not to say that next year you'd have a thirty percent drop, but on the whole, comparing pays-as-you-throw programs to non-pays-as-you-throw programs comes out at thirty percent. And one thing, just to kind of maybe add one piece of clarification to a piece that Arthur mentioned about the bylaw for the ordinance, is that's not that no hauler, private haulers can't do business in town. It's that in order for a hauler to do business in town, they would also have to still offer recycling service. So they couldn't just come in, come to a private resident and say, hey, the town's making you trash and recycle for one seventy-five. I'll give you just trash for one fifty. They can't, they can't, it's just preventing them from doing that. They can still offer them something, they just have to offer a bundled price for recycling as well, if that's the.
Okay, thank you for that, that's helpful. So as both Brian and Arthur and, and our town administrator Rebecca has been, and stuff. So, um, as both Brian and Arthur and, and, and our Town Administrator Rebecca has been, um, and Stephanie's here as well, we've had a lot of meetings, um, on this topic, um, because we're trained to, to look ahead, to not just look at today, not just say, well, what have we got now? What would be the path of least resistance? What would be the easiest thing to do and save some money? Easiest thing to do, go to the automated pickup, right? Go to the automated pickup, keep all the trash cans sizes the same, but the tonnage cost then will continue to escalate beyond what we can afford in our budget. Not to mention, um, there's the environmental side of it, and, and it gets undermentioned because we're always so fixated on price, but the, the truth and the honest truth of it is that as these landfills close and tons are diverted out of state, which is happening, it will become more and more costly. When I look at, um, the trash bills, and I'm dating myself now on this committee, but I've been involved in trash before, and I remember, you know, the, the pickup cost and the trash bill, and I look at it now, and I look at like, you know, sixty thousand dollars a month, what, just for the trash, the curbside pickup and the tonnage, and another three thousand or more for the recycling. Recycling is costing us, even though it's the right thing to do, it's costing us. Um, so, we're trying to look at, be very, very forward-looking and say, we're gonna make one-time investment in these carts, right? And I would fully understand tonight if the board needs another meeting to think about this and ask more questions or think of more questions, but I did ask to have Brian here tonight because he's such an expert, and I asked to have Arthur here tonight because he's done so much research, and he's fast becoming another expert, and, and our Town Administrator Rebecca has, um, given us an overwhelming amount of information. So we've, we've gotten so much information, I don't know how much of it you need to hear or what else we need to explain to you. But I think of it a very simple way. Um, I pay my own water bill. I don't pay my neighbor's water bill, right? I don't want to pay my neighbor's water bill. Years ago, when my children were smaller, my water bill was high. And I ran around the house one day saying, can I just get it under that so I don't get into that higher-cost block? And I tried, said, okay, I'm gonna do an experiment. I ran the dishwasher, the washing machine, I flushed each toilet three times, and I realized, no, I can't. I'm going to have to pay the extra because that water use that I'm doing is more than what they want. It's above the conservation level, so I paid it. Right now, because trash, going way back, did not cost that much. It was so easy to just split the bill up into the tax bill and say, everybody pays the same, right? Everybody pays the same. But it's not that way anymore. Trash is extraordinarily expensive and rapidly outpacing most of our budget increases. Even, I dare say, the school budget isn't going up quite as fast as the cost, especially of curbside pickup, which is approaching six-hundred thousand in the last year of our contract, I believe. And, uh, if we continue to have the manual pickup, no question in my mind, we're paying, we'll be paying a million dollars for curbside pickup, uh, just to get it picked up. And that's before you pay for the tonnage cost. The tonnage cost in the last three or four years has gone from like eighty-one dollars up into the nineties. It's going to definitely go through a hundred dollars a ton, no question in my mind. And then there's all the add-on processing fees and everything else, and those, those we're working on. We're working on getting a better contract that's not off the table. By going to the carts, that doesn't mean that we're not opening everything else up for scrutiny and, and, um, negotiation. But, we're going to need to go to automated pickup to go anywhere on this contract. And to go to the automated pickup, we need to think about what size bins do we want to set this town up with for the next five to ten years, because that's, that's what you should be thinking of. We don't want to buy them one year and then have everybody chuck them out and say, no. So, the thirty-five gallon bin is smaller than the bins we are allowing now. We're allowing two thirty-two gallons. Um, so it's cutting it down. But, for people that are putting out just one trash barrel that's not full, you're paying for all those people that are putting out a full barrel and a full two barrels. Um, so this would put us more into, like the water rate is, you pay for what you use. And, and what Brian was able to bring to the table was the information from other towns that have gone to this model and are doing it successfully, that overall, people have figured out ways to live within the thirty-five gallon and to recycle more, to buy le, buy less packaging, to use more of the resources around town that you see to drop off shoes and cloth and pillowcases and whatever else you're throwing out. Old clothes that nobody would want can go in the materials bin. Um, we are hoping, too, in the new contract, to open up a wider array of recycling, um, beyond what we have now. We don't, can't promise that, but we're gonna be looking towards that. But, a ninety-six gallon recycling bin would fit a lot of recycling. So you'd have, the equivalent of these two bins together exceeds the bins we're allowing now. The only difference is more of it has to be recycling. So, we're hopeful that, um, this would be something the board would consider. We, we would need a decision on the purchase of carts. So we have everybody here tonight in case you have questions. Um, do we want to start? Do you have questions, does somebody have questions?
I have some questions.
Go for it.
I was typing them. Um, so first, yes to the recycling cart, because that bin, like, I, the windy days, I just can't, I just see that the recycling goes all over the place. I'm out in the middle of Salem Street.
Okay.
Trying to collect bottles, so thank you for that. Um, so, a little clarification, so the extra cart is one-seventy-five a year, and then, plus the pay-as-you-throw bags. And then I saw a ten-dollar per month...
That's, that's the town, the town pays, uh, to the hauler itself.
Oh, okay.
Right.
They don't, they'll, they'll know that we have all these extra barrels that are not part of the contract, we pay. So, so, so for example, if there's a thousand people that have it...
Yep.
In town, it'd be ten thousand dollars extra, the town will pay.
Okay, okay. I think, because it said additional cost to the residents, I wasn't too sure if that meant, like, they would be billed, but I guess, yeah, okay.
And that, and that, but that is offset by the fact that each, uh, each resident pays a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year.
Yep.
So then, so ten times twelve, a hundred and twenty, plus the, you know, so that's...
Okay, so I guess it would be the same for the overflow bags, the one-fifty, a dollar fifty per bag that's not in there, okay. And then...
Yeah, the dollar fifty would be what they charge, the hauler, the current hauler. I said, if you go to the overflow bag, we're gonna charge every time we pick one up. He said, okay, fine.
Right.
We're charging, is it two-fifty right now a bag? Yeah, something like that, so we'd have to add another dollar fifty on.
Okay. And then my...
That's the four, that's the four-dollar charge for the bag.
Yeah, that's kind of almost a negotiable type of thing.
Right.
You have to figure out, but it has to be in that range to make it, uh, the town not losing by it.
Right, right.
Right.
No, absolutely. And then, my last question was, um, I was just curious if there was an analysis of household size. The reason I asked me my husband, like, we have like one bag a week, like, it's easy. Uh, I have a neighbor, ha, they have four kids, it's a family of six. So was there any analysis of, like, household size or family sizes in Groveland? I don't know if...
Um, no, we didn't, because for the, for what I said before, when we do, when we do the water rates, it's a unit-based pricing, right?
Right.
I pay for the water that I use. My neighbor pays for the water they use. This would be, uh, a historic move for Groveland, too, paying for the trash service that you use. So right now, potentially, you're paying more than you should.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
And you will pay less, because what we would eventually hope to succeed in doing is the ho, the pickup cost would remain in the tax rate, and over time, the goal would be to have most of the tonnage cost into the per unit. Initially, it would be, as we said, you know, you could fill that first car without using the bag, so obviously, that's covered...
Yeah.
...in the tax, right, that tonnage. Um, but it is moving towards a pay-for-what-you-use in the town, instead of the, um, you know, the historic approach on trash is just divided up amongst all the households, everybody pays the same thing. Trash has become excessively expensive, um, and there needs to be a, some type of a price signal to the public to let them understand how crippling this cost is, and how, if we're able to move to this, if you need to use an extra cart for a year or so, as you transition, okay, you know? You, just like I had to pay the additional water surcharges, uh, because I had children who took forty-minute showers. Um, but, you know, you try to talk to them, right? You try to limit your use, you, and, and I think we can all, I've seen Groveland rally years ago on the recycling movement, and we rallied strong, and we got together a really good recycling program down here at the town hall. And we had a lot of success with it, bringing the recycling down and sorting it and all this. And I feel like if we rally behind this, um, and again, the Trash and Recycling Committee, we're committed to working on this as long as it takes, finding all different avenues for people to pursue to reduce what they need to put in that thirty-five gallon. Let's get it down to whatever, the lowest we can possibly get. Um, and then the good news would be is that you're paying for what you use, you're not subsidizing other people on your street. Everybody's being treated the same way, we're all getting a fair shake, the same pricing. Um, it's fair, it's cost-based, it's unit-based, and it'll allow us, within our operating budget then, to hopefully free up money for other needs. I mean, rather than paying for trash, wouldn't you want to put another outreach worker on our council, on our elderly? Wouldn't you want to put potentially another firefighter on the fire department or another police officer? Or dogs?
No, aging adults.
Oh, aging, that's right, I'm supposed to call myself older, elderly. I'm just older, I'm not elderly. You're as old as you feel, that's how I look at it. Um, I'm really happy about this, the work we've done on this committee, and I know we've thrown a lot at you tonight, so I'm gonna let it keep going with questions. And, and remember, we have our expert from, um, D E P, we have our Arthur, we have our Rebecca, we have everything here. So go for it. Do you have more questions yet?
No, no, this is good, I, I get the intention of just being more thoughtful of what you throw out, so I'm, I'm behind that.
Okay, Jason?
Um, the only thing I think I'd like to see is a little bit more of the public's input, whether it's done with a, um, monkey survey and a social media blitz with an area they can actually make comments and, and ask some questions, followed up with a public meeting, just so we have a, a better idea of what the, what the public's reaction to this is gonna be. Um, but other than that, I, I think it's a great idea, and, uh, I think, uh, looking at the options that were presented here, I agree that, uh, option four would probably give the town the best, uh, ability to limit the tonnage while negotiating the best possible contract with the bi-weekly pickup of the, uh, recycling to maximize the tax dollars.
Yeah, I, we, on the committee, I'll share that we did, at times, we spoke about a survey. In fact, I started on the committee going, we gotta do a survey. And then I realized that, um, we have to go to automated pickup. We, we would be remiss as a committee, and the select board would be remiss in their jobs if they didn't say, hey, we're going to automated pickup. So then what are you going to survey on? And how are you gonna know that you're getting an unbiased survey back?
Oh, I wouldn't call it an unbiased survey.
Oh, it's gonna be biased. You're gonna hear from the folks that want, but, you know, want to throw out the most, and is that fair to those that aren't throwing out that much? Is it? I mean, do you want, maybe we should just take the water bill and everybody pays, I divided it up, what? About six-eighty a year, seven-hundred bucks a year, everyone just pay that. It doesn't matter what you use, go for it. We'd, we'd have people yelling at us. The problem is we have a culture, an in, an entrenched culture of the trash being something that has been spread across all, and that was really the wrong approach to it. Some towns, in fact, you can just do your own thing, get a contract, and they have a transfer station. We don't have that type of setup. So, our options are automated pickup and cart sizes. And we have to think about, seriously, that we buy these carts for the next five to ten years. We're making an investment in the future of this town, the future of the environment, and we're sending, you know, a message forward that this is, this matters, that this is something that we want to work on, and we're not, we're not gonna find people or penalize people, we're gonna work with them, and we're gonna give them options. So even with the smaller cart, you still have an option. It's not that you can't throw out what you need to throw out. We just need to start collecting the cost from the, from the right people, I think. You know, put the unit cost, same as the water rate. Go over a certain amount, it gets a little more costly, but you might say, I, that's okay. I have a family at home, I have a lot of things going on, or I want to water my grass all day. If that's important to you, you have the freedom to do that with the water rate. Same with the trash, if you really feel strongly that you want to continue just to throw things out, you will have the ability to use the overflow bags, you can throw it out. And we're just gonna forward to you the cost that the town's gonna incur to pick up the overflow. It's a unit-based pricing, it's nothing more. We're not making a profit on it, and you're not being probably charged on it, but essentially, you'll be paying for what you throw out, more or less, given the cart sizes. Do you have some questions?
No, I, uh, I agree with Jason. I mean, really should kind of put it out there, because for me, it doesn't, it's not gonna make a difference, because I eat out five nights a week. I barely have one bag of trash a week, and...
We love you.
It's, it's, it's not gonna bother me, it's probably not gonna bother my father, you know? But, I would like to see what the, the, the families are thinking, because I, you know, driving around, you see what people are throwing out, and I just, I feel that thirty-five gallon container is a little small, but...
It looks small today.
I'd like to see what other people, you know, would think, but, but, no, I, I agree with, uh, the, you know, the theory on the water. My mother would go right down in the basement and shut the main valve off, and, you know, so...
Love that.
Yeah. So, but, yeah, I would, I just like, uh, say just, oh yeah, she's, she was ruthless at times, but, uh, you know, just, just to put it out, see what the residents think, you know? Just get their opinion, because it's gonna affect them, so...
It is.
But, other than that, I got nothing.
Ed?
Yeah, I, I agree with Jason, that, uh, that the townspeople should be able to weigh in on this, through some kind of a survey. And, looking at that thirty-five gallon, uh, container, I don't think that's big enough for your average family. A sixty-four would probably, probably be better. And, uh, just taking into consideration that, uh, you buy some kind of an appliance, and, uh, you're gonna get, you're gonna get a lot of styrofoam. Uh, and styrofoam isn't recyclable here in the town of Groveland, and it, uh, it probably should be in some way. Some places, some municipalities, uh, do recycle the styrofoam. But, you, you, you got on the average family, a husband and wife and, and a couple of kids, they're going to, uh, that's thirty-five is not big enough for them. And, you know, you've got a lot of families that are, uh, uh, live in paycheck to paycheck, and to hit them with extra for, for trash, uh, I, I don't think it makes sense. And also, taking into consideration that, you know, people are, basically, they, they don't have to pay for any, uh, any, uh, extra, uh, right now. They put out a couple of, uh, sixty-four gallon bag, uh, containers and they're picked up. So you're gonna, you're gonna cut, uh, thirty-two gallon, you're gonna cut that in half, to, to thirty-five. And that's, what's gonna happen, I'll tell you, is people are gonna be taking their trash and throwing it out in remote areas of the town, which is gonna be, uh, which happened before, and that's gonna, somebody gotta go pick that up. Uh, but, uh, and I think the ninety-six gallon is a little big for, um, the recycling. Uh, I mean, I'm like Mark, I, I probably, once, once... I mean, I'm like Mark, I probably, once every month, I'll put out a bag of stuff. They don't generate much, especially, especially recyclable stuff like cardboard and that stuff. I saw a run around a corner from me today, a house that seems like every week they're putting out a lot of cardboard, and it was stacked outside their container today, or last week. But I, again, I don't think thirty-five gallon for trash for the average household family. Single person, husband and wife, yes, maybe. But they generate a lot of trash with, with kids. And I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair.
Right.
I think if you have something to say, you should go to the podium and identify yourself.
Yep. Come on, Stephanie, you can speak, thank you.
Stephanie Bartel, Trash and Recycling Committee. I mean, if, I, if you're going to talk about fairness, I don't think it's fair for, for older adults also to be paying for giant family trash, like we're talking about per unit. So we're also lucky enough to be getting, is it a grant that, for, for the MAC, Public Education, the, the MAC educator that can come and work with our community to help work with diverting? Because the biggest thing that we have to do is divert trash out of our landfills and out of our trash. So that's composting, recycling, as Kathy was saying, the textiles, there's textile bins all over town, so we're going to have a lot of opportunities for public education. Just from a fairness perspective.
Yes, I think
Nice to be able to pay for your own trash and not everybody else's.
Right. And to address the issue of dumping, because we did consider it, we said, "Okay, what happens if we go to any kind of pay-as-you-throw?" Brian was good enough to provide us with the statistical studies that show that, you know, no, there's no increase in the dumping. So I think that there will definitely be some pushback. It's, it's the tougher path. Just to, yeah, it's the tougher path, there's going to be pushback. But looking at other towns that have successfully transitioned to the thirty-five gallon, it looks incredibly tiny next to the ninety-six. Let me just point that out for the, for the record. It looks miniscule, like I look at it and go, "That ain't going to work." But it's, this is a tough decision. I think a couple of survey questions potentially could be helpful, but I also caution people to be wary of surveys, so that if we word some questions, be careful of what we're asking, make sure that it's something that makes sense to us when we get the data back. Because if you ask the question the wrong way, or the wrong question, you're just going to get back a bunch of nonsense. Certainly, the sixty-four gallon trash receptacle would be the path of least resistance. It would be. And, you know, ultimately, it's a decision the select board will need to make. But myself personally, I looked at that, I know it's the easier choice, and I thought about the next five to ten years and thought, "I think we need to start thinking ahead more to get ahead of the overrides that we've passed for trash." Because let's be, let's be honest here, using the amount of trash that we're using, the amount of tonnage, is not without a cost on the overrides. We have had to run overrides to fund trash, and people have been furious. You mean, if I don't vote yes on this question, my trash won't get picked up next week? And the answer is yes, because without pay-as-you-throw program, the whole cost of trash is in the tax rate, capped at two and a half percent, all of it. And we have to somehow figure out how to budget for it. Pay-as-you-throw would allow us to give that per-unit cost outside the tax rate so that we could budget better and avoid overrides for trash. The only override you should see would be for other things. Trash should be outside of the override. But again, where we are now, heading where we are now, no question in my mind, at some point, we're going to have to float an override for trash if we don't start to think seriously about where we need to position this town for the next five to ten years. Adam?
Guess I'm the only family here tonight, so I'm trying to speak for them, so every
I'm a family person.
Well, it's like, family of five at home, right?
Yep.
The thirty-five gallons isn't going to do it. That's fine, I'll buy another one
Yep.
And pay for what I throw away.
Yep.
It is what it is. The recycling, though, the ninety-six gallons every other week?
Well, I
I do two sixty-fours a week worth of recycling now.
Yep.
So if we, you know.
I don't know that we would have to go every other week because currently
That's what your slide showed.
I know.
It's preferable for us to negotiate a bi-weekly. We have actually checked that they will take a ninety-six.
Right, because right now, they take unlimited every week, so.
But they're by hand. We're talking, if part of their cost is automated, it's a whole different structure.
Okay, so maybe we can, we should probably get that locked down more.
Yeah, I, one, one thing I would say, though, that was, kind of didn't make sense to me.
Yep.
If we're going to buy another barrel
Yes.
And then now we've got to put overflow bags in it, is there any way, just for simple ease of use, to just
Flat rate?
I take a thirty-three gallon bag and put it in a thirty-five gallon barrel, I do one of those a week, it's fifty-two weeks a year, can you just add another two hundred bucks onto the cost of the pot?
Right, well, that's
So I don't got to fumble with bags.
Malden had that. Another town has that.
Okay. What town did that, Malden? Okay, I'll look that up.
Yeah, it's exactly what you described, is they mapped out if you don't want to go for my bags, two bags, whatever it is.
Yeah, I just don't want to take and put a bag inside of a bag to put it in the barrel, like, are we doing less waste?
No, that's definitely something, yeah.
But I, I would say, you know, I'm speaking only for myself, if I'm going to buy another barrel, like
Just put it
Buy once, cry once, see you later, you know, pay every year and be done with it.
I think the, yeah, the balance is that, is that, like I said, it's a good idea that towns are done, I think it's
Right, maybe you could come up, because the thing is, they're not going to pick it up on the TV.
Yeah, so I was just saying, that, that idea was done by, is currently done by Malden, the paying for an additional sticker that aligns to the cost of bags through the year, and I think it's a good
Oh, okay.
To consider, but it's also, I think, a good thing to keep as an option because buying the sticker does then lock you in to the cost all year, because you, so you still do want to incentivize potentially using less bags. So for, for the people that, if you buy the sticker, now you're like, "Okay, I'm just going to fill this cart no matter what because I already paid for it."
Okay.
So you don't necessarily want to give that to people, at least that would be my recommendation, is you wouldn't necessarily want to give that to people because you still want that pay-as-you-throw incentive to
Well, if they're paying for the barrel.
But I'm saying, yeah, I was just saying.
If I'm, if I'm paying, if I'm paying for it and fill it up, I'm paying my
Right.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, having, I'm saying, having the option to do it, definitely, having, it's probably better to have the option to do a sticker program as opposed to have everyone do it. But the sticker program, that's a great point, it's definitely something that you can integrate into a pay-as-you-throw program for that convenience factor, and it's been done before.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We think Adam's on our financial board too, as some of you probably already know. So, yes, Ed, go for it.
Just a follow-up comment. I know you, you mentioned a little while ago about the communities around us that have gone to a pay-as-you-throw program. But perhaps we could look at the neighboring town of Boxford, which abandoned it as of July first, and they went, went back to the regular, they were, they were a pay-as-you-throw up until July, I don't know when they started, but it wasn't working in Boxford.
Right, I can actually talk about that because I did read about it, and I could, I could, I can refresh myself if I need to. But I think, as I understand it, what they had was, they did not have automated pickup, and they did have a sticker thing, but the stickers were like falling off and stuff, so it wasn't working. So our program, the, the, the stickers would not be universal, so it wouldn't be everybody sticker-ing everything. In Boxford, everybody was trying to use stickers on their, on their carts, and it just didn't work. And then they weren't doing automated. So then, Boxford, in their negotiations, they actually did a really great investigation, a really great report, they determined that they wanted to go to automated pickup, and I know they shaved at least a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand off their contract right off the barrel. Yes?
Can I just speak up there?
Yes, please, because otherwise it doesn't go to the television at home, that's the problem, we can hear you.
Well, sorry, no, I, well, part of the, you know, I was working with you guys, I did some, some research on different communities, and in Boxford, you can probably check on their website, you have to actually, you can get your own hauler to come to your house, or you have to pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. You get free recycling, but you have to pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year, just like we kind of say with that, and it goes, you get a bill sent to your house. So it's an extra fee for everybody.
Yeah.
Not built into the taxes.
That's under their new program, yes.
New program, yes.
Yes.
That's, so they, and they have, they get, I think, a sixty-four and a ninety-six. But don't quote me on their website, I did research a lot of towns, but I think we guys were kind of, a lot of towns, a very, there's a very diverse way of putting trash, let's put it that way. Every town is different, so it'd be nice to see a matrix of how things, how different towns do operate. But yeah, that's the first time I've seen it where they'd actually have to pay an additional fee on top of their taxes of a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year, or a hundred and ninety-five, actually.
Right, right. So we could, we have the database in the Trash and Recycling Committee, we could attempt to grab a sampling of towns and put together like a chart, if that would be something that would help everybody. And, but what I would ask is if we could just do it on the current contracts and not go backwards, because it's a lot of information that we have right now, and it's, it's overwhelming if you start to try and go through everything. But if we could deal with like Boxford's current contract, and we could look at the Malden contract, we could get, I know Brian can help us, he's, one of the grants that our town administrator brought in is paying for Brian to assist us on providing these, this kind of information. So that's something that we could get pulled together. I don't know, do you have any information on any surveys that any towns have done on this topic? Because we, we ran into a brick wall on survey, we just couldn't figure out what to ask that wouldn't come back like, "No."
We have, there was a recent survey that we did, there's only like, I think, like twenty respondents, that was how different areas of a town feel about pay-as-you-throw, so I can share that with you. And one thing I will mention is that there is other communities doing thirty, doing the thirty-five gallons, I think it's up to like, close, around twenty, but that, even more, last I checked, it was twenty, but that list wasn't updated actually, now that I'm realizing it. But the thirty-five gallon isn't unheard of, it's working in other communities, Malden, Swombscott, I can have, I have a list on my phone if people want to hear which other communities do it. But, yeah, and I guess they, I think the importance, I think Kathy did a great job iterating the important piece of it of the way that the pay-as-you-throw program also protects against the really unpredictable next ten-year landscape. I'm definitely sympathetic to the idea of families needing the extra barrel, and I get that, but I think that long, that long-term picture of, this is an industry that has changed rapidly in the last twenty years, especially when it comes to costs, more than a lot of other industries, that's probably going to, going to continue as our Massachusetts landfill capacity is probably going to reach its max around 2027, if we don't permit any more landfills, which doesn't look likely, so we'll send more out of state, so we're going to have these rising costs. So there's definitely, the town opens it up, towns open themselves up for a bit of risk by having a fixed static amount of tax revenue, like Kathy said, for, for trash, and an entirely unpredictable tonnage amount. So there's just a big vulnerability that towns are left open for when things aren't, don't have this pay-as-you-throw program. So I get it, there's pros and cons to both sides, but I do think that, kind of like long-term view of protecting, protecting against that vulnerability is one of the big benefits of pay-as-you-throw. It's one of those things you don't really see, it's not like what you get, but you don't, you don't really realize you're getting it, because it's not like a concrete benefit, but it's a, it's, yeah, it's definitely a, like I said, saying, protects against that vulnerability as this industry changes very quickly every year. And I'm, and I'm also happy to answer any questions, email call about any of this at any time for people, so.
Thank you. Yes.
Ed, I just want to clarify, in terms of the survey, and getting comments and having people ask questions, it's more about trying to get this information out there and getting people talking about it. Because the more people talk about it, the more people are going to be aware of what's going on. So I think that's an important piece. I don't think we're going to get an unbiased survey back, I think it's going to be very biased, but the fact that people are talking about it and people are more aware of it, I think it's important. And I also think it's important to point out, it's not just about, "Well, if I pay for it, I throw it away." It's about getting people to start thinking about reducing the trash so we don't exceed our maximum landfill in Massachusetts, which then our cost will continue to skyrocket as we send it out of state or continue to try to send it out of the country.
Unfortunately, probably going to happen anyway, but yeah, I agree. And, yeah, having that waste reduction
Right, it's, it's, in essence, I mean, it's, it's recognizing that we like to avoid overrides, and we're recognizing from our work on the Trash, Recycling and Trash Committee that keeping the tonnage cost of trash in our tax rate is just setting us up for failure. Okay, we're either going to have to cut a budget in town or override the tax rate to continue to pick up the tonnage. By changing it to a per-unit cost per family per unit, that will protect trash from being the item that goes on the override. So a service that people want to have, and they don't want to have to keep voting overrides, because override money takes care of the trash that year, but as everybody knows, that money can get redirected to the school budget, to the police budget, to the fire budget, to the highway budget, anywhere, it's a general override, there's no way. The unit pricing protects the trash. It protects that service because that money is collected for trash, it's not money that becomes profit for the town, it goes to pay for trash. It's a, it's a direct payment for a direct service, just like your water bill. It couldn't be more succinct and transparent. But I think if we want to do a survey, I think we need to somehow provide some background information. Because to just go out there blindly and, and show this, this picture, I think if I wasn't sitting here, if I hadn't spent all these hours on the committee, I'd be like, "Are you out of your mind?" You know, when my kids are home, we can't do that. And why should I have to pay for that? I'm already paying for their soccer, their hockey, and everything else. So I think we need to get together a couple of charts that illustrate maybe the top two choices that we might want. I wouldn't give them every choice, if the board can narrow it down a little bit, top two or three choices, plus some information about whether the towns are doing, what does it mean if you need another cart? And then, okay, what do you think? You know, what do you, are you, are you going to be able to work with this? You know, is this something you can work with? We've seen this town, again, rally to start recycling, I've seen this town rally to save green space, I've seen this town rally to keep itself clean and small. We need a kind of a rally here on, on the issue of trash and pickup, because right now, it's a budget buster, and it's, it's going, it's going nowhere fast for us. So.
I have just one more thing, Kathy.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank you and the committee for doing this. I never realized there was such a complexity behind all of this.
Neither did we.
So I appreciate all of you navigating this, because it is an important topic, and you're right, to, to literally take money and throw it away is, needs to stop, so, thank you.
So I'm guessing the board's not ready to make any decisions tonight, and that's, I assume that. But if you could give it some thought, like what questions you think you would want to ask the public, also what, if you want some information for the public to see what kinds of comparisons, and maybe by the next meeting, is it okay to put this on again? Could we choose like the top three choices or top two choices? Because I don't want to give them all of it. I think that's more.
Let me know, I can, maybe minimize the images and maybe do a slide if you want.
Oh, yeah, that'd be awesome, yes.
Yeah, if you come up with what you want, you can email and kind of
Thank you.
Create something.
Thank you very much. Okay, so you can contact Arthur directly, he works in town. Brian's information, we can get out to everybody, right Rebecca? Everybody on the board, thank you. And everyone knows how to get in touch with Rebecca, you know how to get in touch with me, so just give it some thought, and we'll try and put some stuff together for our next meeting. Do you think it's okay to go another meeting? I know that you're still looking at the current contract and wanting to do something, but this is okay? Okay, all right. Are we okay to move forward then?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, for all your input, it's helpful. I know it's a lot at once. So we're going to move on. Um, the par, oh, the dog park. We love the dog park. So signage and bark pass requirements. I have a bark pass. Everybody should know that. Probably the only one. There's a few in town, right Jason? How many people have bought one?
I don't know, I have to refer to Rebecca, but I believe at least fifteen.
I'm one of them. What I liked about the bark pass application process, and why I asked to have it brought up, is that, um, when you apply for it, you have to put up your rabies certificate and, what else? Your license, I think, your dog license? And you can put a picture of your dog up too, if you want, and personal stuff. But mainly, it's just a way of registering the dog and saying, "My dog has its shots," you know, "and I, it's a licensed dog, and I'm bringing it to the dog park," and I, what, what did it cost? Like, twenty-five or thirty?
Twenty-five dollars for residents, thirty-five dollars for non-residents.
And now that I'm older.
Getting those discounts?
Milk it, no, I'm just kidding. Um, but I also brought it up because I remembered Mark's idea, which was not that bad. Remember we said there's really no way to check dogs at the park to see if they have a bark pass? But when you go in, you go in through one gate, and then you're in that little area where you decide to go to the big dog area, the small dog. You, we could have a board where you hook your pass on that you're going in. Hopefully no one would steal it. I would hope not, not the dog park, right? Jason, right?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a practical, uh.
So, but I mean, then people would know they're supposed to have a pass to go into the, aren't we supposed to have a pass to go to the dog park? That's what we voted, right?
Yeah, try to.
Okay, well, I'm one of fifteen people.
One of fifteen in this.
And I have to buy another one.
Saturday morning, there's about forty people there.
It's very popular. So, um, do we want to, I mean, what do you think, Jason? What could work?
Well, word of mouth definitely hasn't worked. I have posted on the Facebook page several times. Um, but I think the biggest thing is just making it a lot easier for people to actually register.
I thought it was easy. I just did it online.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. I didn't have any problem doing it online, but it's still online.
So what do you think? You mean they have to have a hard copy?
No, I just think, uh, people would, much easier to come in, drop off their money, and take their pass and leave.
But then they haven't read their dog and their rabies and all that. I kinda liked that part of the registration process. I value my dog.
It's law. They have to have their.
Well, yes, that doesn't mean that everybody's following that law, right?
Right, well.
I mean, I sort of thought the bark pass was a good idea. It got a little thing to put it in.
Seemed like a bone.
It's so cute. Go ahead, Ed. What's your thoughts?
Um, through you to Jason, how many people are licensed to bring their dogs down there at this time?
Uh, according to the, well, licensed how? With the town or with Groveland specifically?
With Gro, with, how many people are licensed or have the permits to use?
A bark park pass? I believe it's only fifteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, nineteen.
Nineteen? Yeah, well, I swear, there's close to nineteen cars down there, almost on a daily basis. But, I know when we brought it up before, nobody's gonna police it.
Right, exactly.
So why, why get the permit to use the dog park, if nobody's gonna police it?
Well, I don't know. Who polices, uh, the license that they have, their rabies shot with the town?
Well, the town clerk.
You have to get, you have, in order to license your dog, you have to, you have to have a shot.
Right, but who polices it? How many dogs are running around here unlicensed?
Maybe quite a few, but.
Yeah, half, half of them, according to the town, there's over twelve-hundred dogs that the vets have reported that the town has that's gotten rabies shots. But only, uh, six-hundred of them are licensed, and that doesn't, the cost doesn't include anybody that doesn't have the license.
But don't.
So, so why is it law that they have it if it's not gonna be policed?
Well, the question is, who's gonna, who would police it?
Exactly, who?
It, uh, so, like, you, you could say the same thing, is why go and license your dog in the town of Groveland, uh, and get a rabies shot if nobody's gonna enforce it?
Right, so who's gonna enforce it?
Cause it's the right thing to do.
Well, I, I agree.
It's the right thing to do.
You're the dog, you're the dog park guru.
Well, that's why I thought just having, uh, some kind of a, a board where you hook your pass up to show that you're coming in there with it.
And the wind and the rain is not practical. I don't think it's practical anyway. I don't think most people are gonna do it, but.
But, well then, I mean, should the sign say to use this park? You should have a dog. You should have a bark pass. Give them a QR code that goes right to the, of application. Yeah, give them a must-see or whatever. I mean, I like the idea of people registering and showing that their dog has their shots, cause your dog's running around with their dogs, right? So I'd like to know for sure that the dog has the shots.
Yeah.
It's a great park. I mean, I, I truly enjoy it, and the people that go there are very nice. I just feel that we have to find a way to promote this kind of honor system that, you know, you're gonna use the park, let's help keep it looking as good as it did when we opened it up. That's gonna require some funding, and that requires an annual permit.
Is there a sign there now, at all, that mentions about a pass?
No.
Okay, okay.
So should we vote to put some signage up? And ask people to see their bark pass?
Yeah, no, I think the sign would be great.
That's too good. That's too well timed. Kudos. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna try and promote this more with a sign, right? Is that where you want to go? You think it'll work?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. What does everyone say? Do you need a vote from the board on this, or what? I mean, we voted to, to charge a fee.
If you're looking to add signage, then yes, I would recommend that the board take a vote.
Okay, so we made a motion to put a sign up that you're supposed to have a bark pass, and is there a skewer thing or code they can scan to get it on their phone?
I would add a QR code. Makes it easy.
Yeah, we do that?
I'd recommend it, yeah.
Okay, we want a QR code.
Get fancy.
We're going high-tech in the dog park. So can I get a motion and a second on that?
Do you want the sign to include the, uh, dog park rules?
Yes.
Might as well, right?
Yeah, what are the rules? I don't know the rules myself.
I know that, uh.
Oh, they're here. You're on the.
Somebody put some rules here, but that's not, uh, what's actually posted at the dog park.
Oh, okay. So what, I know there's like, what the hours of use are.
Yeah, the hours are on a separate one.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, typical dog park rules are, park participation is at your own risk. You are the owner, you're legally responsible for the behavior of your dog at this park. Leases are required on all dogs while entering and exiting the park.
Yeah.
Uh, please clean up and dispose of all dog waste immediately. You, the owner, must be inside the dog park watching your dog with lease readily available.
Okay.
If you handle a dog at this park, you must be at least sixteen years of age. Children under thirteen must be accompanied by an adult and supervised at all times. Any aggressive dogs, any dog showing aggression must be removed immediately. Dogs should be trained with voice control, which, when they're at the dog park and excited, uh, it's, it's, uh, very open to, um, your interpretation.
Okay.
Uh, but prohibited items are dogs and heat, glass bottles, human or dog food, aggressive dogs, sick dogs, and puppies under four months.
Right. And then where do you, do we put the bark pass on a separate sign?
No, I'd put it on the same sign. Bark pass, probably right on top, first thing, with a, with a QR code. Bark pass required for entry.
Okay. So we get a motion in, is, did everyone hear the rules?
Mm-hmm.
We all agree? Can we get a motion to move this forward?
That wasn't a motion?
I don't know.
Motion.
Next.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion of the dog park?
It's getting rough.
No more jokes?
It's getting rough.
I'm just an official cat person, for the record.
All in favor. It is unanimous, okay.
Madam Chair, may we go back to item number six?
Yep. Oh, yes, we jumped right over. I'm so sorry. So the current trash and recycling contract was number six, and, um, we could make a vote contingent on a decision on the carts, right?
We could, um, but I think that, I mean, the consensus of the board is that we're going to be moving to automated regardless, so I would like the opportunity to sit down with our current holler to figure out exactly what would be allowable to them if we were to open up the contract, um, and what they would require us to do in return.
Okay.
And kind of narrow down some of those more specific details to present them to the board for their final approval.
Okay, so, um, well, contract negotiations, would we be doing that in executive session when you come back, or not?
Uh, depending on what they say. They could say, you know, we, we mentioned that we would open up the contract over the summer, and now we've decided that we're not going to. But, I mean, I haven't had an opportunity to get back to them without getting a vote up the board as to whether or not they would move forward with even considering, um, opening up the contract and moving in that direction.
Okay, so the motion that you're looking for is to vote from the select board to allow the town administration, administrator to meet with our current contract, current holler, um, and discuss reopening the contract for purposes of automated pickup and other issues.
Correct, and the terms in which they would be allowed, in which they would consider such.
And the terms in which they would consider such, as a motion.
So motioned.
A question?
Yeah, wait, let's get a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, okay, go ahead.
When's the, when's the current contract up? I thought it was twenty twenty-five.
No, it's not. You have another year of the contract after the current year, so the next fiscal year.
June of twenty twenty-six.
That's correct.
So what you're looking to do is to open up the, uh, open up the, the contract now, uh, to take effect in twenty-six or prior?
To take effect this July one with automated, capturing the savings from moving to an automated system instead of a manual system, because then they do not have as much overhead costs, because they're moving towards the automated arm.
We wouldn't have a ballot for this one.
Okay, so, are we ready to vote? All in favor. It's unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
Go for it. Okay, sorry about that. Um.
I just sent you the, uh, the rules.
Okay. Um, okay, so then also, um, point of clarification, and, um, Ed, you could have told us this at the last meeting, but, um, we mistakenly had on our agenda that Leah Crane, who does live in the River Pines, was also on the Groveland Housing Authority. Um, and she doesn't, she just, she does represent affordable housing, cause she lives in it, but she's not on the Housing Authority Board, that, um, I don't know the name of the, I know they always have one resident who is on the board, but I don't know the name of that resident.
I do not.
Well, we didn't intend any disrespect, and we wanted to just correct the record. Um, Chairwoman Kathleen Purnier contacted, um, me as well as Rebecca, and, Ed, if you had known that, we could have corrected it last meeting, but nevertheless, we apologize for the confusion, and, um, no ill intent was meant by that at all to the Groveland Housing Authority. And now we're up to minutes. Approval of the minutes for October twenty-eighth. Is everybody present?
They look to be in order. I'll move for passage. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? None? Okay. Older unfinished business? Nope. Items not reasonably anticipated? Okay, so moving to town administrator time. Now we have our memo page, thank you.
So, under Town Hall operations for the budget book, now that we've approved the fiscal year twenty-six goals, I will be sending out the budget guidelines to our departments this week, hopefully on Wednesday. Um, the deadline for submittal will be our standard deadline, which is December thirty-first, through two thousand twenty-four. So then we'll take that, and we'll assemble the budget book, which will then be presented to the finance board, and then ultimately the select board. Last meeting I had mentioned about the tax rate hearing. We were hoping to have that scheduled for this evening. However, unfortunately, we did not receive certification in time for the posting requirements for such meeting, so we will be moving that towards our next meeting, which will be on December seventh. And then also to update the, actually, is it December seventh? Ninth, excuse me, I misspoke. So it will be on December ninth that we'll have our tax rate hearing. For the summer program, we had talked a couple of meetings ago about the situation that we found ourselves in. You had authorized me to move forward with drafting an RFP, which I've been doing. Uh, I do have a finalized version, but an opportunity also presented itself through a conversation that I had with the YMCA. Um, an individual had been talking to the school and had been talking about the fact that they had bused certain individuals or certain schools to other off-site Y locations for summer programming. And so, we had mentioned that we are wavering on whether or not we're going to be able to move forward with our summer program this year, and that we were looking to see whether or not, um, an outside firm would come in and utilize the space, offering a program that would benefit the residents here in Groveland. And they had mentioned that they would potentially like to partner with us on this initiative. Um, they currently pick up children over at the Riverside Plaza across the bridge, and they do provide summer programming options that Groveland residents have taken advantage of. So what they recommended, or what they were proposing for, uh, discussion was that they could potentially use another location, which would be the Bagnell Elementary School. So they would be able to, one, for those students who are looking to have a more outdoor environmental type of experience with kayaking, archery, and those types of amenities, would be able to, uh, take the bus from the Bagnell School, be brought to those locations, and then be brought back. And that, at the same time, they would have an opportunity to initiate programming at the Bagnell Elementary School, which would be more so geared towards some of those more indoor activities, and not necessarily some of those other, um, ones like we had mentioned with the water and archery and stuff like that. So, they'd still have outdoor potential, because it is a playground, et cetera, but it would still offer different levels of programming. So, they could potentially move forward with an idea, we're still getting all the details together, this January for advertisement, which is currently in, in line with what we would typically do for the Bagnell Elementary, or, so the summer program, and then they could take effect this year as well. They would also invite all of our, uh, current counselors that had been working with them back, and they would also allow for extended day options, which is what we currently have, both morning and evening. And they also provide additional financial scholarships for those individuals who are not able to afford the program. So, the other benefit is that we could potentially charge them, uh, a small fee, rental fee, to utilize the space, and that money could go directly into the operational budget, instead of what we currently have now, which is, it goes into the revolving fund. So we could move away from that and generate a small amount of revenue. Obviously, nothing large, because the overall intent is not to make money, but to have a program here in Groveland that Groveland residents can take advantage of, that is convenient, that is in their hometown, and offers a variety of options, which is kind of what the summer program was moving towards, whether it be, you know, Chromebooks and Nintendo Switches to STEM and 3D printing, to water slides, to all these different activities, and this organization has the ability and the resources to move forward with that. So, they will be presenting, uh, an option for us to review and to see whether or not we want to move forward with. So I just wanted to let you know that we are moving forward with that, and we do have an RFP in the back of our pocket as well, if at the next meeting we decide that we want to move in that direction.
Um, just a quick question on that. So they're going, are they gonna come to our next meeting, or are you?
They're gonna be proposing what they would, that what they would be able to move forward with. So what I did is I sent them the last two years of the program that we had, which, again, is very different than what we had, because it, it had changed so much in the last three years.
Yes.
So I gave them the evaluate, the program handbook for each of those years, and they're evaluating what was offered, so that they can kind of cater it towards what we've seen over the past few years, and then see what fits within their curriculum and for what their bottom line is, and then we would be able to have that conversation.
So, they would be in charge of collecting all the money and everything, and the only thing that we would be responsible for is whatever lease fee that they submit to us. So it gets us out of the middle of trying to run a summer camp, which is where we want to be. That's great, okay.
For field use and property uses, uh, special permits, uh, we received none for important dates. Uh, tomorrow, obviously, which I forgot to write down, which is the state of the district, as well as the regional school meeting, and that is tomorrow at six PM for the state of the school, and seven PM for the regional conversation. And then also, as you know, Thanksgiving, so Town Hall will be closed on Thursday, as well as Friday. For grants, um, we received a community planning grant to engage, uh, for the zoning for three A, and we held our workshop last Thursday. and we held our workshop last Thursday. There was eight residents in attendance, so it wasn't the best of turnout, but it was still a lively conversation, and we're very appreciative of those that were able to come and provide their input. So the primary goal of the process is to make sure that what we do put forward for our zoning aligns with the community character that we have, and that it makes sense in terms of the housing needs of our community. So we took a lot of time to explore what the requirements are under three A zoning, which is a hundred and thirty units and the fifteen units per acre. We talked a lot about density and what that means and what that looks like in our community. You know, taking a look at a property with four units on it, but point two six acres results in a density requirement under three A for our community, which was the fifteen dwelling units per acre. So it really kind of put things in context when you're talking a lot about the size of a lot and what we would need to have in order to comply. Overall, Groveland has about six thousand sixteen acres, and we would need to zone just about under nine acres to meet the three A requirements. That was the first public workshop that we had. We had it in an original meeting back in June with Emily Ennis within his associates. That was a boot camp with the Select Board. So this is the first public engagement session. She will be returning for another public engagement session, you know, on January thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. So they're exploring different options and different proposals that they can present to the community to figure out exactly what we would like to see for zoning. So that conversation will be a little bit more in-depth, because we'll actually have options that we're debating. And for those that are looking to view the presentation that was provided or just have in, or general questions or looking for information on three A, I provided you all the link. It's a project page. It's also up on our website under Grants and Projects, and it has all of those updates and links and documents that would be relevant to the conversation. For procurement, there were no updates, technical review conferences. We held no meetings. Community preservation projects, just to let you all know that the Shanahan parking lot construction will be beginning the first week of December. A notification was sent to neighboring properties to inform them about the upcoming work, and also to request that they remove any of the vehicles from the parking location that's currently there, since there will be construction work. We definitely had a long conversation with the tenant on the rental property on Shanahan Field, so that we can make sure that they have all that they need in terms of access to their property. For the phasing, what they're going to end up doing is they're going to focus solely on the driveway at the first point. So they're going to create a sole driveway point into the rental property, and then they're going to fence off that area from the rest of the project. So there should be no disturbance, and that homeowner or that renter will have access to their property at all times. And then for meetings, events, and seminars, I have them all listed out, and if there's any that you had any specific questions on, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very complete. Questions? No? Select members? Becky? No? Jason?
Nope.
Ed?
No.
Mark?
You want another joke or something?
No, that was, that was just a good one. It was just, wow. Ah, thanks. Missed that one. Okay, no. So Rebecca shared with me, I had asked, you know, because we're trying to do the agenda, and I know I hear from different people and I see different things that come through, and we think, oh, get that on the agenda. So we started like a future possible agenda items list that I keep throwing things on to anytime I think that they might need it. The things we covered tonight were on at the Trash Committee, the River Pines, the Dog Park signage, PRSD, Regional Agreement, Woodya Project Proposal. I threw on there that the decision by the Executive Office of Housing is out on the Garrison Street. So I thought we should throw it back on our agenda. So we review it, because we wrote the letter, and then they approved the project despite what we wrote. Well, we didn't write it. Our lawyer did. But I think that to complete the circle, I mean, we took the time to take resident comments. We took the time to draft a pretty good letter. I'd like to have whatever they wrote in their decision as they looked at our concerns. I'd like to see that reviewed in our meeting. Even though we're not zoning board, we did participate in the process. The status of schools, we'll see tomorrow night what they say. I thought we should throw that on the agenda in case we wanted to talk about it more, depending on what we hear. And then going forward, Ed, if we could, when you have stuff on CPC, if you could give a heads up, we could have a standing agenda item or whatever, just anything that's going on there that we need, that's new and different, be nice to know about it. Trash and recycling, I've asked to have that on ongoing until we figure this thing out, right? Affordable housing kind of, to me, ties into, to this three A thing as well, right? It's like everybody comes out when it's in their backyard, but we're not being very proactive other than that. We're just reactive. Over and over again, we go, oh, no, right? Are we going to, can we put affordable housing, our, whatever that limit is we're supposed to hit? When are we going to hit it? Can we have that as an agenda item to know what's going on there and whether or not we're still vulnerable for another forty B? And how does that interface with this density three A housing thing? I mean, it's, they're, they're not different things. We're talking about development in the town, right? I mean, even though you, you focus on the density thing, my understanding is tied to that is they want additional homes built.
Does not the affordable part, though?
Well, yeah, well, so, okay, but it's, all of this is tied together. It's not all separate things. So it's almost like affordable housing as an issue is, is a big thing in our town. And when only eight people come out, you know, you kind of say, okay, come on. How can we get our residents more involved so we know what they're thinking? And we don't have to deal with the reaction when something happens that they don't like. You know, if, if we'd been more proactive twenty years ago, we wouldn't be looking at the Garrison Street thing. We wouldn't be, right? But we weren't. So let's try and, I think, get that out there, and if you have thoughts about it, what we can do, we're the executive board, what can we do to generate information and make people understand this better so that when they, they will come out? Sometimes I don't understand it, so I don't know how they can. Then I put the December nine tax rate hearing on the list, and now I just threw on the YMCA summer program on the list. We did receive one comment about the winter, winter parking ban, but Rebecca responded to it, so we weren't sure if they were trying to make a public comment or not, and we're waiting to hear back. They wondered why we have to make a ban for four months. And I thought, so that cars don't get plowed over? You know, it's, it's kind of a necessity, yeah. But I just want to let you know in case you hear anything else, that we're just waiting to hear back from the individual. Is there anything else that you think could be a potential future agenda item that we've overlooked? Yes.
On, on anything?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to keep a running.
Yes, a future agenda item, maybe the next meeting. An update on the paving on Harvard Road, Murray, and Salem Street. It, you drive down there, through there, and it's like a minefield. And it's, you're thinking of on a roller coaster. It was a lousy paving job to be done. It's settled now for a year, and it was pretty close to a year. And it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be redone, and I haven't seen any progress on that. But maybe, maybe get an update at the next meeting for what's going on there, and we're going to get that corrected before winter.
So Harvard, Yale, and?
Harvard Road.
Yeah, I got.
No, not Yale.
Not Yale?
Murray.
Oh, Murray, okay.
And Salem Street.
I can answer that.
Oh, okay, so I can take it out.
It's going to be done in the spring, not before the winter.
That's going to cost us money in plows.
It's going to cost money on the plows.
It's brutal.
Well, it's on the list, and I broke down scheduled for spring.
Any way we can speed that up and get it done before winter? That's, that's dangerous out there.
We can't secure a contractor in that amount of time to get them mobilized. We have two separate contracts right now. We have milling and we have paving, so they're two separate contractors. We're looking to go to bid for an all-inclusive contract, so we don't have to negotiate with one company to come out and do the milling and then another company, and then if you don't have enough roadway miles, then it doesn't incentivize them to come out. So we've already tried to get them to come out to do a certain amount of roads, and they say it's not enough. So we need to then rewrite our contract so that they cannot do that to us and that they have to come out when we call. So we're rewriting our contract, going out to bid, expect bids to come in in early February, April timeframe, and then have them get those roads specifically done before the end of the fiscal year.
That's why I think we should have an agenda item, because it shouldn't be up to the town of Groveland to be repairing those. We didn't, we didn't dig it up. It was dug up by the contractor, and he should be fixing it.
We have money. He gave us money, so we have money set aside for that.
All right, let's, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and have the, the guy that we hired to handle paving to come in, explain exactly what's going to be going on, if there's going to be any repairing done before winter, so they don't ruin the plows.
I have it on the list. I put down that it's scheduled for spring, and we can get updates. And get updates, and we can leave it down on the list, and just any new updates, we get them. The minute they end new contract, we'll get it. Okay.
Anything else? Yeah, the Salem Street dam, did you say that already?
Shh, not the dam. Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
I had forgotten about it.
Oh, I don't.
I know. Salem Street dam, so we'll keep, so maybe we'll, we'll talk about this. We'll keep like a little condensed list at the bottom of things that aren't necessarily going to be people coming in, but we're thinking they'll come forward on the agenda when we have information. Okay, so, yeah, my thought was just that so many times things come up, we say, yeah, yeah, and then we, there's just so many moving parts. This was just to kind of keep a running tally of what's coming up, so. Are we good then?
Yeah.
Okay, take a motion. Oh, wait. Happy Thanksgiving. Turkey Day's coming. Yeah. Enjoy it.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving. Be safe.
Yeah.
Everybody deep frying the turkeys. Make sure they're very dry, not frozen. Turn off the fire on your burners before you put the turkey in, in case it boils over. It doesn't catch on fire. And, uh,
I'm putting my in there.
Yeah, just bake it.
See, my son is home.
Deep frying, so much better.
Yeah, do you see? That was my son.
So good, yes.
Home for the holiday.
Good.
So fun. We're going to have the whole family. So I wish everybody a really happy Thanksgiving. It's always like this holiday is just about food. Okay, take a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-three.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-three.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.